Well, don't we already have a deploy of the wall?
We haven't, we just need them to sitting in boxes. Yeah. And train us on it, right?
We have, we have to implement the plan.
Yeah.
If have we not gotten to the point of training?
We have not.
No, I can get some dates for the fall here.
Okay.
At least just today.
Well, we need, I mean, and then it's a little more than that too, right? You need a use policy.
Yep.
We don't have like, when is it deployed? What's it used for?
Right.
Who deploys it?
Right.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, probably get all kinds of volunteers to do it, but you also have like liability, right? So if you have general public coming in, you have a group that does it, and you have you, but the highway department, the two man highway department, or you can put it all up. Do we ask the part department nicely? So, yes, so this policy to begin with, and then it's having the, like we talked about, the folks come down and train us to do it, but who gets trained and when, so.
Yeah, we've been fortunate, we haven't had to use it yet, even though we own it.
Right. Um, so I mean, there is, there is resources out there that show flood levels and when to take action, when it's minor action, major action. Um, so that resource is out there, I think Noah puts that out, um, it comes out in like the manager's brief through the FEMA resources, um, you know, and that's a great tool. The, yeah, the protocol, like when you have a storm coming three days later, two days later with a very similar or higher flood level.
Yeah.
Do you dismantle it? Do you keep it down? I mean, what does that do for the board? So there's small things that impact, like if that wall is supposed to come out to the sidewalk and go to the bridge, what do you do for access to those businesses? Do you just take a part of section down? Do you just lay it down, let it lay down and walk over it?
How quickly can they be, take, how quickly can you remove section?
Um, so two hundred foot sections, um, just.
But I have not seen these yet.
There are three two hundred foot crates, uh, you know, well, um, and there's one that's two fifty. Um, and so the way this works is right, when the water's rising, that opens up essentially. And then as the water recedes, it just folds flat, it's like a PVC product, um.
Water weight holds it in place.
Yeah, and so in theory, you can drive over, you can walk over it. Um, you might want to think twice about having the boat launch, have, if, if it's the time of year where, say, the storm would happen, um, mid-October when boats are coming out. Probably don't want those trailers and stuff driving up over that, come off the ramp. So we might have to find that break and, and pull it back far enough to um, so they just like Velcro together, we're like in the industrial Velcro along the way. And so the, the nice thing is instead of having three foot sections, having to Velcro every one, we just got them pre-assembled. Long trip lengths. And so I think the, yeah, I mean, given the effort, and that's what we don't appreciate yet, is what does it take pack those back into the crates?
Well, dry it.
Um. Uh, and do you haul it back somewhere, open it up again, clean it, do you let it sit there for an extra day or two, so it can maybe dry and, and get cleaned off? And then pack it, what's the community impact of that? And that location could help all those parking spots, you know, unusable. So there's a lot of like smaller detail, like operational details that we've got to work through and um. For the walls here.
And, and, and for that one too, i- it, it seems like something like, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel either, and then, um, you know, it seems like there's a, we could, you know, mirror, not mirror, but use a policy.
Right.
You know, for a similar community and, and work off of that, so we're not rewriting, you know, making something from scratch, so I'll make our adjustments as needed, but, um, you know, so as far as the, actually, yeah, because I know the manufacturer gave us some different places there that, that are using him or whatever, so that seems like something, yeah.
Yeah, this one's got a, a couple of ordinance things in there again, that fall to that, that, that middle tier. Um.
I'm wondering is, um, I know we've got a column in the, in the matrix, but like effort required or time required, because there's some things that are, you know, I think kind of the last one that was involve ourselves with, uh, participate in regional economic development after it's stretched as broad, and it's also kind of like, oh, yeah, but we, we can, we do. It's really more like, to me, I agree that it's like prioritize it, but I don't know if there's like, oh, we need to sit down for you know, six hours every month and engage in regional economic development. So that's where
Right.
I, I'm just wondering if you've got a good way of about, I don't know. Bounce those or?
Wonder if that's when the staff, when the staff review, maybe, like I'm looking at on the historical resources page, um, the t- 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 third one down, distribute information to those living in or near critical, important natural resources about the current tax use programs. The d- information's already created on the tax use programs, you know, we would just need someone to literally flag and GIS those critical areas and then have them run the overlay analysis for the pro- parcel data. And then we've got addresses, once you do that, and like, that's a pretty low, generally a low effort. There's no need that that would have to wait, you know, so that's where I think the staff could kind of, you know, in my mind, kind of weigh in and be like, oh, like, hey, like, I know it's not like a big priority, but we could knock that out in, in, in two months. Um, and then from there, it's an annual list, more or less, if it's an annual thing, it doesn't say what regularity.
But then it's true with the second one too, right?
Provide resources, uh, regarding adapting. That one, uh, potentially, um, I mean, there's some very general information out there, so depending on how catered you wanted to make it, um, there's absolutely stuff out there.
Yeah, I feel like the research on that would be the would be the kind of X factor, and if there's a lot of research it'd take a long time, if it's just something like, we know there's a great document from the state that we got, we just sort of shared evil as a whole.
Yeah, worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not engineers, so we're not going to be designing the, you know, whatever form, but I mean, as a general, there's definitely some information out there on it, um, for sure. And I think that's when there's a good example where, you know, we've been talking a little bit about whether the town would want to create a TIF around downtown, is like a historic, that kind of downtown TIF. Um, and find ways to bring money into support, because there's just activity and things that have to happen downtown, that do happen downtown, that are unique and different from the rest.
Right.
And other ways to, are, is there a big development happening potentially that some of that money could kind of come into that downtown specifically, you know, that's a program there where you could create kind of like a revolving loan fund almost to help people invest in their properties. Um, and if the, it, development that gets done that otherwise wouldn't have from your efforts of seeking it out, um, you know, could put some of that towards it, fund that, then you're not necessarily taking it away from, if you will. I mean, there's two schools of thought around how the TIFs work, but
Yeah.
um, if you, if you create a district and it, assume, presumably, you're going to make the effort to go and bring in the development to then raise the tax value that otherwise wouldn't have been there.
Yeah.
The right development, the right scale.
I think downtown tip is somewhere in the top plan, so we'll see.
Okay.
I think it was in.
I, I feel like I've read it recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Megan was working on the framework, or Megan was working on some of the
Maybe that was where we were.
A downtown tip.
When Megan had done, she had talked about a downtown tip, that's it.
Yeah, she had done that pretty substantial white paper for us and to understand why and
Yeah.
um, and to start thinking about, you know, that business outreach we're doing, and some of these things on economic development, there are things in here that have been identified that could be programs and resources provided by way of funding through that tip program.
And I think Michael's just to look back to your question, you know, you know, like, what does something look like? And I think, you know, Andy did what you pointed out, it's like, really, that is a conversation with staff, and like, you know, is it just something like when we it, it, a practice that we undertake and, you know, something we're supposed to keep in mind, if we see an opportunity, is that when we go for it? Or is it something we're supposed to be doing ongoing? But, yeah. So really to understand what those things look like in practice. Any other thoughts about the section? So it's like twenty past six, there's anyone who needs to stand up and stretch their grab another thing to grab their each.
Yeah.
We do. Power through it.
That's about it. Okay, we're on marine economy. So everything has a, um, three to five year timeframe.
Anything jump up to anybody?
I don't know. Uh, you guys played? The biggest question would be is how we even implement this?
Yeah, I mean, the first one really is just advocate with.
Right.
DMR.
Yeah, and there's ordinance and, and there, and there's, yeah, zoning, zoning map and so, you know, there's some stuff that might overlap and when you're
Yeah.
in there, you know, looking at all this is anyway, so.
I mean, in some places, your harbor master might have, um, some regular hours, um, the one that we share between the towns is just a, really, I think, as needed. Um, you know, so that would be a task that, you know, when you have a harbor master, they might be able to help with. Our shellfish resources are, you know, hired to the county for enforcement, but everything else is driven by that committee.
Yeah.
Um, so it could be either potentially, but again, it's all more or less volunteer or whatever. So I think that's, you know, getting an example, how do we want to support that effort? When the time comes and how, through which group and um, you know, is it a staff position internally that we have now that takes on a few hours to make that happen, or, um, part of a regular of job function on an annual basis? Is that just means there's a couple of extra hours added a month for the harbor master?
Right.
Um, to make sure they're able to do that. Could be a little hanging fruit thing.
Probably, yeah, use that position, yeah. Right, and then the others are land use and zoning, so, right? When you crack that open, just. Yeah. Your twenty hours.
I've already started working on some of this, so. I've got a little, that's sorry.
Did you remember meeting in Newcastle where there was someone that was mapping out the river and some of the you remember that one? Someone from the state was doing some mapping, but I wonder if that will help them with this.
And the Darling Marine Center is constantly doing some studies and work on the river, um, to some regard. Um, I guess mapping in what way? There was
Like, we re- we needed to redo our mapping according to how high the water levels were going and
Uh, you might be thinking about the meeting with FEMA.
Yeah.
Um, they're redoing the FEMA floodplain maps, focusing on inland waters.
Yes.
Um, in like the tributary parts of the stream, like upper parts of the streams where the focus before on the major overhaul in twenty fourteen or fifteen was really on the coastal impact, um. You know, when you, when you, when you hear about the storms that have wiped out, you know, sections of roads in towns like in Jay and Bethel and, you know, those mountain towns, the efforts around those river bu- and water bodies for floodplain mapping are nothing like they put in on the coastal set. So they're basically trying to go in and test and, and model more accurately, the hundred of your storm impacts on those types of places. So that I think is what we've done.
Not particularly for us.
No, we're included in that, but.
We have inland waterways, but it's not like you go upstate and the, the flood levels are, you know, dozens, twenty, thirty feet.
Yeah.
Right.
Or like Catherine Creek is not rising twenty feet, so. Yeah, it'll impact us, but I don't
Right now.
Like a change how we understand.
Okay.
Right.
Go ahead.
I think this, some of these, I'm sup- it was interesting to see how well like these scored on a, on average compared to some of the other ones out there, but I know marine economy is one that the boards talked about, you know, the, the the river and the challenge perhaps, you know, where's that line? What's the impact on the shellfish industry? What's caused that clam stock to get to where it's at now, where it's not really commercially viable? Um, Darling Marines have been a partner in, in that they've got another grant they're going after, which will be on the next week's board meeting, but
Oh, okay, like P and C government town.
And so I think there's things that are continually happening on that front.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's still kind of a slightly, as strong as it scores, it's still also in my mind, kind of a slightly, um, not well defined. Like, how the issues you brought up, like how do we tackle those? Some of these might get to that, um. And so that's another percolating issue there that will evolve, and maybe it's addressed in one of the other phases in the comp plan that we'll see picked up in two or, you know, phase two or three as it was mapped.
Yeah.
Because there were some big topics that were brought up at that meeting in November a couple of years ago.
Yeah, the, the one where, yeah, there were, yeah.
Yeah, but it struck me that when I think about the marine economy, I know there's some land use stuff and zoning that we, we can deal with, so much of it is dependent upon partners though and other people.
Right.
Whether it's the state, the state people, some of that, and then along the shoreline and the, and then, you know, none of us are you need people like Darling, um, Bigelow, in these other places that really can step in with certain type of science, science expertise that
Right, yeah.
that you, me, no one here is.
So, maybe, yeah, so, no, I'm not, yeah, not getting all, yeah, DMR and core engineers, exactly, yeah.
And some of it, most of it does happen in the water where like, we don't have any can't regulate.
And stump is out of, right, it's not out of the local jurisdiction anyway, it don't have, yeah.
Yeah. But it's, I mean, it's interesting though, because I looked at the how consistent the community alignment values were, they're almost all threes, you know, two point eight, so I mean, somebody, yeah, one person decided it wasn't the three, but but everyone else pretty much increased that, it's part of who we are, you know, and it sort of aligns with our identity and, and all the stuff about sustainability and livability and all that kind of stuff. It's just a, what do you do with it?
Right.
As a, as a town, so.
What do we need to do with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Fire, we certainly can do it on our own, it's sort of my takeaway.
Yeah, I mean, I think so much of those fishing communities, I mean, so much of it happened out in state waters or federal waters, and it's like, what role does the town have in partnering with them, but because it's such an important part of the local economy, you know, you do need to, you need to ask, how do we partner with, how do we impact? I mean, so much of the folks that do the harvesting of oysters in this river, you know, might do it in other boundary waters, not that aren't ours, but they come and land them here or, or live here or bring to market here.
There's no doubt that oysters sort of, is one of the defining, the oyster industry is one of the defining industries here.
Serious, so.
Like, we gotta look at those like secondary, you know, like the, like, support industries for boats and gear and whatever else that like does happen, can happen on land.
Yeah.
But like, specific to oysters, I, I was looking at this with, with the land use stuff and like
Yeah.
There's nothing I can really do for, for marine, because it all happens
Yeah.
out there, but gotta make sure that the stuff they use, we're not pushing away.
Yeah.
Whatever that is, which is a little bit harder to wrap my head around.
And then thoughts on the second? Moving on to natural resources, I think we'll find this is similar where we have all three to five years of moderate priority timeframes.
Want to order and stuff in there again?
Yeah.
Um.
He's a, we're in compliance with chapter one thousand, so we just have to stay in compliance and that.
Should we get one done?
Yeah, yeah, that one jumped out, that one jumped out as a good ongoing one, like, how do we measure that we're in compliance exactly? Um, you know, it's something we might need to come up with.
Can we check it off the list?
Well, no, I'd say we have to figure out, how are we measuring compliance?
Oh.
Right, and
We may not do anything, but we can't check it off until after the ten years.
Apparently we are, but, ah, darn.
You know, does that, does that mean there's an annual report and that the only thing we have to worry about? Does that mean as violations come up, we're gonna, um, you know, enforce those issues of overall discharge? Great, well, as they come up, we need to know what our success rate is in dealing with them, how long did it take us to deal with it? Um, so there's a bunch of ways you could measure all of these, and that's what is probably going to be the worst, worst, the most time intensive part of all of this is after we get to through the priority pieces, like how do we set up these indicators to show that we, we can measure and report back to the community on progress?
Yeah.
It's gonna be tedious, but I think it's gonna be, without doing it, you're not going to be able to show other than it's all, it's all or nothing. Either we did it or we didn't do it, or it's an arbitrary number, like, oh, we're sixty percent complete.
Almost, how?
What do you mean?
One thing that, that first two kind of trigger in my head is kind of overall, uh, issue we should focus on is information and, and data gathering, um. We've got our, in, in terms of GIS, we've got our parcel maps, but there's lots of information that we just, we haven't mapped or digitized or updated in a while and, uh, I think that's stuff, I mean, I know we talked about getting you, getting the public facing thing, but also just like keeping a, a local library of our wetland inventory and stuff like that. One of them, the second one is updating the weapon maps, which is a whole you know, that's a big task, but I think the first thing is like getting a library together, or, and I guess maybe just to back out a little bit is have whatever data we're, we're gathering about population, about traffic, about, I think that would be a, that's something that I, I think is would be worthy investment for the community, like I don't know, I don't know exactly what it looks like, but kind of data management.
Mm-hmm, I mean, you're, it's hard to move forward with that information.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Other thoughts on natural resources?
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on through water resources, and you'll see the same here, we're, we're in a similar timeframe for all of these.
Save, saving all our priorities for housing. Well, I mean, you can't. Yeah, and that was, yeah, that's true, we're gonna be the, I mean, yeah.
They're all important in their own way.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely, yeah, they would be on here.
Yeah. It says, you know, the, the, the first one there, that a, um, working with the district, you know, that, that didn't surprise me to see it up there, because that's a, that's a key point to some of the economic development as well as, as, you know, um, working, working with them. I don't know what that looks like to work with them, but, um.
Well, yeah, that provides staff support. I, my question is to what degree?
Yeah.
We don't have anyone specifically doing our grants necessarily.
I know we would get our grant right there. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's If you're a point, those sanitary, there's key to housing too. Right, right. And then you gotta have an water and sewer.
Well, that's what I could see, like, our partnership being like, we acknowledge through our, our future land use plan that like, we want to see this area be suited for development, and so that might mean those utilities need to get there, so maybe it isn't our best interest for development to happen, to work with them, with our grant writer, if we have one
Right.
to find a grant for the expansion, because we know on, on their small user base, they won't be funding the expansions, and so that to me is a great
No, that's mutually beneficial.
Narrow that scopes is, is posted, it seems as though it seems to be a very general.
The town has written grants for them before, I won't go there, but
Yes.
They've got the grand hand jobs.
Yeah. I mean, we are, Michael's gone to a fair amount of other meetings, um, and, you know, we've improved communication. Um, trying to make sure that our capital projects are in the right order um, on roads, and so that way, a year, a year after we pay for it, it's not getting ripped up kind of thing.
Right.
Um, so we're
Yeah, 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 gotcha, yeah.
But yeah, how do we, how do we truly support each other? And I think that needs to continue to
It's a little important.
So that should read, instead of provides, it should said Andy.
Yeah.
Michael, you got time.
Assist, Michael, Andy delegates Michael to assist the ten
Emerson's different.
All right.
Yeah.
But it, it is, it's an important, it's like, it's a key, yeah, it's an important part of it, this when you get sewer and water parcels, and it's, it's
Uh, they also need some help of a data management, or, right, yeah, mapping, stuff.
Yeah.
You know, when I pass them like, so where are your sewers? And they like pull out an old, like, nine, you know, map, uh, well, this actually extends a little bit further, but
Yeah.
but it's about there.
Yeah.
It's a guessing game at times.
It is.
Well, some of their sewer lines are like a hundred years old, right?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think a lot of water lines are
The water lines, yeah, the water line, yeah, and when they dig them up there.
There's some place sewer lines in your neighborhood.
I know.
Um, what's it been, the, what, sixty, seventies, I'm guessing?
Yeah, eighteen sixties or seventies.
No, I think, I think we've had that, we haven't had that sewer collection since that long.
I don't know.
So maybe it was collecting it down in the, the low spot on Lewis Point Road, but
That's true. Yeah, well, even their, 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 you know, even sewer friends down there, yeah. I mean, they're more modern stuff, even if you're looking like stuff that done in the seventies, eighties, it was just done, it was done differently, and, and nobody did as-built, you know, plans, I mean, it was just, oh, yeah, oh, so-and-so will remember where we put that and
It's like this trend.
Yeah, so then we get into, that's not supposed to be there, when a, when a project happens, that wasn't supposed to be there, like, it's, it's there.
Seeing the last one on that page just makes me think that you know, if, if we have a list of things to do and we get them all done in that, before the timeframe's up, it's like, what's that next tier of like, oh, hey, we've got some time, let's, let's go scoop in and, and get that relationship and get that RFP out there, how we want to secure that third party engineering for, to review, because, you know, none, no one on staff can pick up a set of plans and truly understand all of it.
No.
We're not engineers.
Yeah, no.
You know, but we're, we're, we're asking folks to submit to us pretty much all of that, and no one's truly, we're assuming that because someone did stamp it, that it's fine.
Yeah.
Um, it's like when you get into like stormwater analysis, they run out of models we asked them for, but it's like yeah, I think he was right, right? You don't have anyone, should we have someone reviewing it? And that one there is an example that I was thinking like, okay, you know, we've been able to get through the list early, great, um, you know, when we budget time and resources in, into these things, um, so you know, for those knowing, like, we can always exceed the list, there'll be things that we don't get done in the timeframe we expected for whatever reason, um. And it's a talking point, but yeah, that, that's another example of, it's on a three to five, but it might be something that does get to get done sooner, because, or the ordinance is written, written in a way that it's less of a problem, but either way, um, another example.
Yeah, yeah, well, it, it might be necessary, you might run into a a burden that changed, um, it's
I, I, some of this also, um, sure enforcement of the town's erosion and sediment control, you know, we've got a set of erosion
Insuring zones requirement for sure, site plan review.
Yeah, I was trying to think of, I think Newcastle is a separate ordinance, but we've got but this is, a lot of this is code enforcement, so stuff that happens like when they're met actually building something, and I think with Mike or, you know, we've got a pretty good code situation now, uh, not to say anything about in the past, but now Mike seems like he's interested in establishing some more of this, like, okay, what are the requirements for, for code? So, some of it is really just, I think, implementing almost like internal programs, for lack of a better word, but
Well, I can come back and hit on what you said earlier, but staff looking at stuff going, oh, I, I'm, I'm doing that anyway, that's, I can do, you know, or
Or Ben, or, as I might, what, what do you need in order to say, to be comfortably like we have corrosion and sediment under control, and we get, you know, we got a repeatable, consistent process? Because s- some of it may just be like, I go out and look, like, what are the standards?
Yeah.
And it might not be a huge list, but just like, we gotta formalize it, so.
And do you think like the last one on this page we, is something that we need to proactively do? That it's beyond code enforcement?
Uh, I think it right now probably is beyond our code enforcement. Uh, I mean, I've seen some towns that just have a cabin engineers or code for, they also will do all of the like, the uniform building code stuff, so they actually do electrical, they need to have someone who's technically trained.
Yeah.
Um, we, we don't, which is a nice you know, that's good for housing development and bottom line for the town, um, but I think, I, I think that there's a, the question that kind of proceeds this is, is there's anything in our ordinance that requires a, a, a third-party review for typical projects, not the really big ones? And if there is, is that, is it necessary? Um, you know, stormwater management, we've, there are we've got a third party, like the Knox Lincoln Soil and Conservation, like we can only refer to them.
Right.
Um, so I think some of it is like, do we, do we need it right now the way the ordinance is written, and is it, is it necessary? Because I don't, there's a lot of stuff that comes through, it's like but it doesn't need to be that, it doesn't need to be engineered for most projects, so it might not be necessary.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, the larger scale ones tend to involve them, and they tend to overshare perhaps from what, what, what's necessary to get our, our standards in the ordinance, which is great to have a file of.
Right.
Um, but there are certainly some projects that are like, oh, we wish they had some, like, when it comes to like road standards and subdivisions. You know, if they're gonna say they're gonna meet the, um, standard to be potentially future, in future adopted by the road, by the town, there's a different, a higher level standard to meet than if they're just gonna
Asphalt.
Yeah, or just give it gravel, um, and it's gonna have a lot less infrastructure underneath it, and so when it comes to like verifying how that was built, either we put someone out on site more frequently, you know, do we do that with internal staff? Do we do that with a third party that we hire to go out and on our behalf, make sure it's being built?
Internal development.
In that example, yeah. Um, an example, say the nursing home, the skilled nursing facility is being
Right.
built, and that's one there that we still don't know, that we still fully have a handle on, but when it comes to inspecting all of the plumbing fixtures
Right.
um, that we must do, not even like the internal building go, but the plumbing fixtures
Yeah.
um, that fall squarely in our plumbing typically in our plumbing, uh, review, um, or nots? You know, Michael's generally not staff, Mike's not generally available to be able to be on site as often as he's gonna need to be for that. That's another example, like when a project's over a certain scale, um, what is the protocol? Does that fall to that last bullet there for us to think about? Um, over a certain scale, like, there's just that Um, over a certain scale, like, there's just gotta be an extra fee, we have to bring someone in, because our, our person can't spend all twenty hours a week there.
Yeah, yeah, and your fee schedule at first, for a certain, but.
Commercial building, or whatever, you've had the, you know, consultation, whether you, yeah, whether you have somebody, you know, on, not retainer, but, you know.
It is.
They've, they've been clearing the land.
So do we need to set our fee schedule before?
They, they've paid a fee for plumbing, and so it's a matter of whether we need to hire it out at this point, but it should probably be a little bit clearer, written somewhere. Expectation of like, here's our, our capacity and our cutoffs. Um, it might be that we have to take some of that money they've paid in fees, or they actually haven't paid for the plumbing fees yet, I don't think. They've done the land use per building permit, and they've done the impact fees for the sanitary district, and I think that was like quarter million dollars. Um, but I think the, the plumbing fee hasn't come forward yet, because they aren't at that point to put plumbing in.
Um, so. What is, what's going to be based on?
The what?
What is the plumbing fee?
Uh, per fixture.
Per fixture.
Per fixture fee.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like fifteen bucks, ten bucks?
Yeah.
Seventy-five rooms plus all the accessory plumbing use, it's like.
Yeah, yeah, washroom.
Yeah, but again, scale of development, that's where, because we talked about promoting development, it has to be at the right scale and the right places for the right purposes.
Yeah.
In a, in a planned way, and we can do that, so.
I mean, they did, the, the plumbing, I didn't really think about, like, plumbing, it's gonna be totally separate, but they did say, what, fifteen grand? Or triple building permit, and it's supposed to cover Mike's time to go out and, and look at that stuff, but. Yeah, the fee schedule. Man, we're gonna be getting a little bit off topic, but like, the, the fee schedule is definitely we should stay on top of, because. Right, when we get a big project, you know, normal project, we can kind of just, we did, we made painter B, but like.
If it's a house or something.
Yeah, it's not, it's, uh, it's not gonna take us a month of Mike's time, that is, you know, all in.
Right, it's a whole different level.
Yeah.
And you got, and you get different between residential fee schedule, commercial fee schedule, there's a lot of stuff back there, yeah.
Yeah.
And that goes to, to economic development strategies and, in a lot of ways, and it's like, who's bearing the, the cost of development? Um, it's shared certainly amongst all the tax base, but, you know, the average homeowner doing nothing to their property, you know, probably shouldn't be subsidizing if he will. Mike's time, Michael's time, and getting through the planning board and doing the inspections, and so making sure those fee schedules are appropriate and.
The fee schedule should be able to cover the, the, you know, the, the cost of the, you know, to, within reason of that project, but also. It's expected that with paying a fee that is done expeditiously, and we're not, you know, it's not, we'll get to it in three months, somehow, like, I. We also wanna like, hey, you, you have to pay a fee, but we're, you know, we're pro development, we need to get this, we're gonna, it's moving for you, so. People don't mind paying if they know what it's getting done, but it's.
That's the measurement piece, it's like, we could put measurements in place, like, when was it submitted, when was it approved? Um, what's the average time in between those?
Right, there's a reasonable, there's a reasonable amount of time process that, that.
That we aren't doing currently, and the ordinance says for all residential, like, land use permits, building permits, is like a fi- uh, the five days? Is it ten?
I think it'd be ten, for review, like, for like the code enforcement review, I think it's ten.
Yeah, so we've, we've imposed our own times, but we aren't, I don't think we're measuring it in a way that we can say, oh, we actually need an extra two days on average. Right, with these hours, or hey, because we're, we're two days over, we know we need more hours if we're gonna stick to this ten day turnaround time, so. There's things that we need to just focus on, how do we measure it and be able to report back to justify an increase, decrease, or change, one way or the other.
That might also be just, I think code enforcement is a good example of this, but I, I don't know where this is gonna go in other areas, but. Um, like moveback at some point is gonna come.
Yeah, that's.
But, so I, I think the transition from the capacity we've gotten now to the capacity we would need for that, it may not be. Just like a, well, tomorrow we're enforcing moveback, and now we need a full-time code enforcement officer, it may be that it's like. Some months we do, some months we don't, at least with, with code enforcement, I, I can imagine, like, we can have third-party inspectors. So, it's like, well, how does, how would that work if we're gonna sub out basically to a third-party inspector, and, and I, I mentioned that. Partially because we're talking about that topic specifically, but also like, what other things are. This, is the town gonna kind of have to address at some point where it's like, right now, it maybe is like falls on Andy. Um, but it's like, this is something that like, as it grows, it's like, is this too much time, it's not quite enough to be a full-time position, but it's also. Too much to just leave on.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, is there like a bridge that we can use until we get to like a full-time? The code plumbing inspector, full-time.
Is there a world where if, if, if all towns are required to adopt moveback, is that something that could be regionalized then?
Um, because we'd all be using the same rules.
Moveback.
Because right now, every little town has their own.
Zoning, yeah, so with moveback, it is possible.
Moveback, in me and you can report.
Yeah.
And Lincoln County could have, hire a group of people and we'd sort of pay into it.
It's, it has been floated, for the towns that do have to do it already in the county, um, and for those that, I mean, I'm over the boat in mindset that is coming, and let's get ready for it.
Yeah.
Um, and so starting those conversations now with the, whether it's the county, the cog, whoever, whatever new regional group to be formed, um. Starting those now, so you have, because it will take a couple, two, three years to get in place.
Right.
Um, assessing is another one that we've been talking with, because it's another statewide standard, how to do assessing. Um, couple in county office, so I think, you know, if we get into that, cutting costs and trying to make sure we're efficient, using resources efficiently, I think. Those were all things to keep in mind. We can, there are solutions out there, that may work.
Public works.
Maybe.
Well, we're that, we're, we're, we're kind of at our, our cap here for review, is there anything else on that? Folks wanna add to this last section, feel like we've covered it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so just moving, um, first of all, thank you, thanks for, for going through everything, um. And before we, you know, jump to what's next, um, any. Feedback or things you wanna change, I know this can feel like somewhat of a tedious process, so, you know, is there any thoughts on. How to make it better, or, you know, okay, it worked, did it work okay, just like in the timeframe?
I felt this was a good format, yeah.
It was easy.
My only thing I struggled with, when I was going through it, and it may have just because, uh, and, and Andrea was, Andrea was on the, um. The comp plan as well.
Yeah.
The community values alignment column, I was fine with feasibility, urgency, and timing, because tho- those. Sort of like, yeah, that, that's what this exercise is mostly about, the, the community values alignment one. It wouldn't have made it onto the list if, if, if the comp plan people in committee and then the town voted it. Didn't think it was aligned with community values alignment, so it, that was one I always struggled with, well. Well, it did to me, but it maybe, it probably, but maybe not to others, but, but that's just.
I, I looked at it, yeah, and you're right, man, it was right, it wouldn't have been in there if it wasn't, but then, um, I almost had to look at it within that scope. Like, like, look at it like, okay, this, um, uh, community values, but where, like, it's, it's in there, but then, do I rate it one to. Three within knowing that it's already.
Exactly how I looked at it.
It's like a, so it's like a subset of, yeah.
I said, no, I hear you, but.
But then this, I'm just being a little devil's, and I was.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, because when I looked at it, I said, community values alignment, okay, what's this all about? Oh, it's sustainability, livability, and vibrancy, my God, we spent months trying to figure out what our community values were gonna be. And we ended up with those three, which I thought were pretty. Spot on, yeah, in, in, in terms.
Definitely agree.
The town.
But I, I, I think how I tried to view that was, was scaling these things into that department, meaning how would it. You're not putting everything at the top of the scale.
Well, that's why even having the column was, was a point, but, but absolutely, yeah, absolutely, feasibility and, uh. Urgency and timing, I mean, there's all kinds of. Yeah, to think about there, yeah.
I would kind of look at it as like, yeah, another level of prioritization more than, is it value or not, yeah, yeah, but it's, yeah, I think I get you, yeah.
Good to know, yeah.
But I think the format, I mean, I, I felt this was, I, it, it was, you know.
Once I figured it's out.
Yeah, did you, I could do it on my tablet at home, I, I.
And then I, I had to pull up my laptop, I gotta, I mean.
I had to go to my office, there's my widescreen.
I did my work.
I don't, I did, I had on my tablet, and then I, I requested admission through an old Gmail, and I, I got it all messed up, I'll just do it at work.
So we have, um, you know, essentially what we could do, if, if you're okay with this, is like. We, there's forty-six more priorities in, or more strategies in phase one. So we could score that as another chunk.
Yes.
Um, the, the, next, the phase two and phase three, um, there's like fifty-eight in phase two, and we've got like fifteen in phase. Three, so it might be that we look at what, um, what's in there and just kind of make an even cutoff. Um, where one, one focus areas ends and another one starts, and to kind of split those up, does that, does that seem? I mean, it's kind of keeping it sort of similar a number to score at a time, rather than doing it all in one.
Sure.
Okay, all right, so, um, our next steps then will be, um, you know, like I said, we're gonna meet tomorrow and talk about. Like how we translate what you've shared. Into what we wanna talk with the staff about, and what it looks like in terms of implementation. Um, and then we will put together, well, we have the remainder of the phase one scoring sheet, so Andy will. Send out an email with that, um, just a, a ti- a timeline for that, but I think the other thing you'll determine is when to meet next. And, um, um, and then we'll, we'll go on from there, I don't know if we wanna schedule the other workshops. Because it looks like we'll do one more, two more, two more scoring and a final, um, of the implementation.
Yeah, I mean, would you rather us, you know, before, maybe before the next workshop, just put. Not all at once, but like, in one week, send out the second half of phase one, in a second week, send out phase two, and then third week, send out phase three, and then meet after you've scored all of them? Or do you wanna kind of go in it, in a more, meet after each section of review?
I think we should meet after each section, because it would be overwhelming.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, keep it, you know, in a small chunks, we can focus on, on those areas, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I know Dan was eager to keep going on, on the first page.
I didn't know, I was ready to keep going, it wouldn't let me.
I didn't explain it, it walked it, and he's like.
Anything else, any questions or anything you wanna share, turn those feedback or where we're headed? I really appreciate your time, yeah, coming, coming to do this, and I think. I mean, if we're not, we'll probably have a little bit to share in terms of an update, in terms of how this is moving into the implementation roadmap. Um, but we don't have to spend a lot of time talking about how we're gonna do it, so we might go do seventy-five. Minutes, maybe less, depending on how it goes.
For the next one.
For the next one, yeah.
Did you wanna spend time right now?
Leave that up to the boss, yeah.
Um, if you want to, um, we can, uh, we can pick it up at the board meeting next week if you want.
Yeah, we can do that, we get a board meeting next week, and then, next week, yeah.
I can look at internal schedule that we have here, and then just propose a couple of dates perhaps, so we wanna know like, availability as well. We can talk tomorrow about some dates that might work around, and then, do you wanna try and keep them on Wednesdays, do you wanna try and any day of the week, or any day?
The board, because it's like, you know, we have our regular meetings on Wednesday, you know, it seems, I don't know, it just feels like it's a little bit Wednesday, because it mustn't be, hasn't it? Kind of like doing the five thirty Wednesday, because it's just, sorry, my head. I don't know bandwidth.
Hey, we're headed to the budget, so we might move it straight away.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
All right, well, thank you so much, um, and we'll get, we'll have our next, um, well, you, you have the scoring sheet, but it will be unlocked.
So probably in a couple weeks, I mean, we're gonna move forward.
Yeah, yeah, the goal is still to have something by the end of the calendar, so that next year's budget process can start to take some of this principle in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So like, like a planning map for that?
In my mind, yeah. Just gets a different talking point, rather than the status quo, and it's up to two percent or up five percent.
Well, it's great, yeah, very well done.
Absolutely.
A lot of work when you do that.
A lot. Whoever did this, whoever did it.
A lot, well, stand up. Uh, is there any other business while we're in, uh, the meeting, motion to adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor? Adjourned, no official act.